Thank you for joining us for this joint committees with the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs and our good friends from the Committee on Government Operations. It's 3 o'clock on this Thursday, January 30th. We are streaming this hearing live via YouTube. If for whatever reason, weather related or otherwise, we have some type of technical difficulties, we will post a notice as to when these joint committees will reconvene. And for purposes of those who are testifying, we're going to limit testimony to one minute.
Attention now, visitors. Be advised, your ears may have some malfunction. You can use fire panels. Please disregard this. This is a false alarm. Call home.
So just to repeat myself, we're going to limit testimony for individuals to one minute. So first in our agenda, we have SB 133 relating to energy. First in our testifiers list, we have Michael Angelo from DCCA.
Chair, Vice Chair, Mickey Knox for the business. We will stand on our written comments.
Thank you. Mark Lick, Energy Office.
I'm Mark Lick, Energy Office Chair, Vice Chair. The committee, we stand on our testimony with comments and happy to answer your question.
Thank you, Mr. Lick. Leo Asunshin.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Leo Asunshin, Chair of the PC. Will stand on the written testimony providing comments.
Kiko Pokowski from IBW.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I will stand on my testimony in office.
David Bissell from KIUC has submitted testimony in opposition. James Abraham. On your lecture.
Good afternoon, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committees. My name is James Abraham, testifying in opposition to Senate Bill 133. We have our written testimony. We don't feel that this bill is necessary because the PUC is open to a docket to investigate wheeling, including intragovernmental wheeling, which is the subject of this bill. So we think that this bill should be deferred and we should allow the PUC to go through their collaborative process where many stakeholders, including government agencies, have been involved. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 133? Remember, is any questions of those who are here for the bill? If not, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 161 relating to county permitting and inspection. First up is Don Chang from DLNR.
Hello, Chair. I'm Masuda with the DLNR Engineering Division. We stand on our written testimony without further comments. I am concerned that it does not include any properties in the FEMA schedule.
Thank you. Mary Alice Evans from Office of Planning has submitted commentary. Don Apuno from the Department of Cities, Department of Planning and Permitting, has submitted testimony in opposition. Keith Regan from DAGS.
Chairs, Vice Chair, Members of Committees. Keith Regan, Comptroller for the State of Hawaii Department of Accounting and General Services. Stand on our written testimony providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Ted Kavales from Grassroots Institute has submitted testimony in support. We have Craig Nakamoto from HCDA.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee, Ryan Tam, White Community Development Authority. We submitted our written testimony and say no.
Thank you, Ryan. Seth Kamamoto has submitted testimony or commentary. And Reed Misue from Omizu Architecture has submitted testimony in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 161? If not, members, any questions?
Thank you. Chair, I have questions.
Oh, so I said anything more than wanting.
I don't know who to ask this, who would be in charge of this.
My question is, I see it's a good, you know, requiring all kinds of things to expedite among the state agencies. I don't see any accountability, so I just wondered whether there's language that we could put in that they report back or something on what projects they've approved on their own. I don't know who would answer that question. DAGS?
HCDA?
HCDA.
Ryan, can you help us with that?
I think this would be Ryan Tam, White Community Development Authority. In terms of expediting permits, I think this is, you know, there could be, there could be measures or you could draft language to allow annual reporting.
Because it seems that it's good. I mean, you know, like especially DOE that has a lot of projects and if you give them the responsibility to do their own permitting without waiting in line for years, that's a good thing, but you know, how do we know what, who's liable that permitting is, you know, approve things?
Yeah, and I think the city department planning permitting might have, you know, better, more substantive comments. Our comments were more related to, you know, at least from a HCDA perspective, we mainly look at the zoning and land use, right? In terms of building permits that address life safety and code requirements, that's still, we typically still rely on the county permitting.
Chair, so maybe there's somebody from the county. At least we know that what they require and that the departments that take it on at least are doing things to safeguard, you know, safety of whatever they build.
Okay, well, especially since DPP is not here, we're just through all kinds of responsibilities.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Just stay there, one last. So Ryan, in your testimony, you bring up some really good points. I mean, this is kind of just a blanket. We can disregard the county codes for city, state projects, but you mentioned that you don't, or the state government doesn't have expertise in building code review, site inspection, certificate of occupancy requirements, and a few others. Could you come, help us draft some amendments to come up with? We can have a blanket exemption except for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or whatever it is.
We'd be willing to get back to you or unless you need it now, but.
Oh, no, not now, but maybe tomorrow.
Certainly, we could help draft language.
Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? No? No? Thank you, Ryan. Members, we're going to move on to the next measure, Senate Bill 232 relating to renewable energy. On our testifiers list, we have Candace Ito from Contractors Licensing Board.
Hello, Chair. We have Kai and Serra Toffey. Contact the Labor Department.
Thank you, Candace. Wayne Tanaka from the Sierra Club has submitted testimony in support. David Bissell from KIUC has suggested amendments. Koda Daily from Ola i Kauai has some testimony in support. And we have Laura Breer from Kauai Climate Action Coalition in support. And we have Lauren Zerbo via Zoom from Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
Ted Kavales from Grassroots Institute is not here. Aaron Weber Keel from Sunova Energy Corporation might be joining us via Zoom.
Not present, not present on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. How about David Millenex from Greenpeace Hawaii? Is he on Zoom?
Also not present on Zoom, Chair.
Sure. BA McLean Top in support. Aneah Lo in support. Catherine Fryer in support. There are another 10 individuals all in support. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 232? Yes, Mr. Mould? Sorry. Don't let them see you on the testifiers list.
Thank you, Chair. I did not submit testimony on this bill. Rocky Mould, Hawaii Solar Energy Association. This bill is an older version of a permitting bill. This is a bill that we pushed last year. There's a more updated version of this bill on your agenda, SB 588, that we support and we prefer from the Hawaii Solar Energy Association standpoint. It includes some of the same things as this bill, but it's just an updated, better version, SB 588. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Okay, you can sit there for just a second. Members, any questions?
Real quickly, you actually touched upon the next bill. You write, this is a repeat from last year. And last year, I was concerned about the fact that Solar App Plus is at the county level, right?
Correct.
Correct. So why aren't you guys approaching the county councils to pass this at the county level and keep coming back to the state?
So again, we're pushing SB 588, which is different, which doesn't have an explicit Solar App requirement in it this year. We felt it was needed really to have the legislature step in and help us to, you know, send a policy call out there so that the county councils would react. And, you know, we think the county councils and the city and county has reacted, and some of the stuff that's in that bill from last year in this bill has been acted upon. For instance, there's a materials and method number removal in this bill. The city and county of Honolulu removed that from their requirements already. And I do think that, so some of the pressure that the legislature exerted was helpful in this regard.
All right, thanks.
Rocky, a couple of questions. In the testimony from the Contractors Licensing Board, they say that we should, if we were to move forward with this bill, restrict it to just residential systems, not what is embodied in the bill currently, commercial and, you know, kind of just large scale PV projects. I mean, if we're going to expedite the permitting process, we should make this finite to those who are doing kind of rooftop, so not just the AESs and Amarescos of the world, right?
So SB 588, the next bill, we do specify that this is for behind the meter, customer sighted projects. So that could be larger scale projects, but these are projects that are on the customer side of the meter. So for instance, like a large, you know, warehouse could be a pretty large solar system. That would be covered under the self certification rules of this bill and the next bill, and we're supportive of that. So for utility scale projects, we don't, this is, this does not cover utility scale projects like what AES or Clearway or some of those other folks would do. So we aren't pushing that. You're correct.
Okay, thank you. Members, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Mould. Going to go on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 412 relating to renewable energy. On our testifiers list, we have Keith Ayashi from DOE has submitted commentary. Leo Asunshin from the PUC.
Chair, we'll stand on our testimony providing comments.
Thank you, Leo. Laura Breer has submitted testimony in support. Sherry Pollak from 350 Hawaii in support. David Millenex is IT. Is David with us via Zoom?
He's unavailable on Zoom, Chair.
Oh, thank you. And we have a supportive testimony from another 12 or so individuals. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Senate Bill 412? If not, members, any questions? Leo? So this bill has the responsibility of each area state agency to do their assessment, and I can't imagine that every state agency has the capacity or the understanding to say, oh, you know, Department of Health, we have this many rooftops, and we can do this much solar, and it's going to cost this much. So shouldn't we have HSEO or some other entity be responsible for working with the various agencies and then come up with the list to then have us act upon versus just kind of DOE go find somebody in your staff to go do this?
Yeah, it's either HSEO or else even like the planning office, right? Some more kind of overall.
DAGS.
DAGS, well, if you're looking at state buildings, right? That's one. But at the same time, right, I think one of the issues that might be kind of, we do have some state agencies that are not in state buildings, so how do they, right, would you want them to be or just looking at state buildings, right? But yeah, maybe some kind of overall entity or agency that, I don't want to say doesn't have skin in the game, but can, you know, look across the spectrum and be kind of unbiased and then here's the data.
... reported in this building. Please.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Better and better.
Wait, so you want responsibility of this?
I don't know. We would be the right agency. I mean, we can, certainly, you know, we have the capability to, you know, kind of coordinate everything, but then, right, we got a lot on our plate as well.
So Mr. Lick, do you want this?
We do a lot of this. Can you?
Yeah, you can. Mr. Gog, the question was, would we like to take on this function? I believe that the Energy Office statute does provide technical assistance to public agencies. We just don't do it uniformly and build up capacity to do it to all agencies all the time. We do it based on their need and their desire to build out renewable energy.
So the answer is yes.
We could have it added to our duties.
Okay, so the answer is yes. Because I got to pick one of you two, so you want to jump in, Paul, or?
Wait, isn't that? Come, Charles.
Yeah. Keith, you want this?
I think, on behalf of Leo and Keith Regan, I think HSEO will stand up and say we'd be willing to do that.
You're a good man.
But, you know, we would like, you know, the resource to continue, have enough staff to be able to handle that.
Of course, of course. Great, thank you. Thanks. Members, any further questions on 412? If not, we're going to move on to the next measure, that is Senate Bill 588 relating to renewable energy. On our testifiers list, we have Don Chang or someone from DLNR.
Hello, Chairs. Edwina Masuda with DLNR Engineering Division. We offer, not our written testimony, we offer some comments. Any state or county law that is not consistent with the National Flood Insurance Program may jeopardize continued eligibility in the program. Unintended consequences of program suspension include no federal flood insurance can be sold or renewed in the participating communities. Currently, there are about 46,000 active policies. 28,000 are in what we call special flood hazard areas. Certain forms of federal disaster assistance mitigation grants will not be available in the event of a presidential disaster declaration, and it would impact federal mortgage guarantees in the special flood hazard areas.
Thank you. Thank you for your commentary. Leo Asunshin from PUC.
Will stand on my written testimony providing comments.
Thank you, Leo. Mark Lick from State Energy Office.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Mark Lick, Chief Energy Officer, Hawaii State Energy Office. We do stand on our testimony, supporting the concept and hoping this bill continue to move forward. We think it's totally consistent, the self certification parts are extremely valuable in improving the process, making it a lot less onerous, and will help greatly expand renewable penetration. And it's totally consistent with the executive order that Governor Green issued 2501 on January 27th, which calls for this kind of approach in trying to streamline and accelerate renewable transition. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lick. David Bissin from KIUC has some commentary and suggested amendments. Paul Orum and Ella Aki are individuals both in support. And do we have Aaron Weber Keel on Zoom?
Not available on Zoom, Chair.
And then we have another dozen individuals all in support of this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to, oh, I'm sorry, I have some indication of Zoom participants. Laura Zerbo, by chance, IT is Lauren Zerbo here?
Yes, she's there, present.
Good afternoon, Chairs. I'm Alexis Chapman for HFIA. We stand on our testimony in support. We also submitted in support of SB 232, but I jumped on a little late, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Rocky Mould?
Hello, Chairs, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Rocky Mould, Hawaii Solar Energy Association. I stand on my testimony in strong support of this bill. This bill implements self certification for solar projects. This is a key efficiency measure that will really lower costs for achieving our renewable energy goals. Regarding the FEMA flood zone exemption, what we're calling for here in this bill is only PV that is put on existing structures that does not expand the footprint of existing structures within a floodway would be eligible to receive this treatment, the FEMA exemption. And that FEMA exemption actually is a huge block on our ability to build renewable energy in these communities. So we're asking for that to be removed. I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Ted Kavales from Grassroots Institute has submitted testimony in support. And Sandy Wong says she might be joining us via Zoom.
Yes, I hear you said you had any questions. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the room or online that would like to testify on Senate Bill 588? Members, any questions?
If not, we're going to take it on, I guess I'll jump in, right?
Oh, wait, I want to ask a question.
Then ask all the questions.
Rocky Mould, sorry.
You're looking at me like that?
I was looking at you because you looked like you had a query on your face, but it's just handsomeness.
Yes, Chair.
Okay, sorry, going back to the flood issue. If we were to make that amendment that I suggested by DLNR, are you saying that that would preclude this hastened permitting process from being fully utilized or?
So it's a, the FEMA exemption in the bill is really separate from the self certification. Self certification could happen within FEMA flood zones, and it will make that more efficient. But what we're finding is there are these additional rules in FEMA floodways that are getting in the way of installing projects in those floodways. And so that's what that's for.
Okay, so I don't want to jeopardize potential federal funding, so I'm kind of inclined to help make sure that we don't jeopardize that and put in DLNR's suggested amendments. But in your estimation, is that a deal killer or is that something you can live with?
It's a, the industry is really asking for that exemption. It's really, it is, that is getting in the way, and it's our view that current jurisdictions are over, you know, being too conservative in their interpretation of the law. And they're really, that FEMA flood zone exemption really is for like new construction that expands footprints within these floodways. And, you know, we've had conversations with various experts, and we've provided, we've shared memos and had folks look at this, and we believe that properly installed PV that's on the existing structure that does not expand that footprint should not trigger these FEMA flood zone rules.
What does FEMA say?
FEMA says that jurisdictions have broad discretion to interpret the rules how they see fit.
Okay, so have you acted on point about this exemption?
We have had conversations with FEMA.
And what did they say?
They said it's up to the jurisdictions to decide.
So they said if we were to do is allow this, and there was a disaster in the future, there would be no implication of federal funding or response at all?
They think, they believe that there's broad discretion to interpret the rules. They did not come in, chime in one way or the other on that question to be true, to be sure.
That leaves a lot of concern, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So if we were to put that exemption in, there would still be value of the bill. You wouldn't be able to do as expansive of impact with this expedited permitting.
We'd take self certification, yes.
Yeah, so you'd take half the load, right?
Sure, of course.
Good, thank you.
Cool.
All right, we'll hand it over to my trusty partner to take us to the finish.
Jump in the gun a little bit. Okay, SB 92 relating to emergency medical response. This is the DFIB bill from last year. First up, we have Keith Regan, Comptroller for DAGS.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Keith Regan, Comptroller for the Department of Planning and General Services. Stand on our written testimony providing comments.
Okay, thank you for the comments. We also have Lay from Jamie Morgan, the Senior Region Lead for American Heart Association. Are they here on Zoom? Not, they have written in support. That's all we have on 92. Anybody else wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions on DFIB? Seeing none. We had this, quickly, we had this bill last year made fixes to address the concerns. Do you think that's something we could do again this year? Okay, cool. Okay, thank you. That's good for that one. Let's move on to Senate Bill 635 relating to energy efficiency. This one requires state agencies to expeditiously use energy efficient lighting. First up, we have Mark Lick, Energy Office.
Thank you, Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Committee. Mark Lick, Energy Officer. We stand on our testimony with comments.
Thank you, sir. Lea Laramie, Climate Change Mitigation Adaptation Commission, written in support. Sherry Pollak, 350 Huautia, written in support. Carolyn Carl, Executive Director, Huautia Energy, in support. And finally, Lay from Beatrice de Rigo, Coalition Earth, in support. That's all we have listed for 635. Anybody in the audience who's Zoom world wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions on 635?
Chair, I have a question of Mr. Lick. Hi, morning, Mark. You say that HSEO and Hawaii Energy have done some of the assessments. Do you have a list of what you've done in terms of the departments or where you've actually done the assessment, the status, and what's left to do so that you started an inventory of some sort?
Yes, Senator. HSEO routinely performs assessments of buildings. We benchmark buildings. We have a major contract underway currently that's actually being led by our Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Branch Chief, Maria Tome, who's here, as well as our Energy Efficiency Manager. And so they could even provide further details on the nature of that contract and how many buildings are covered under that, but it's quite significant.
So this bill that's asking you to do it, you're already doing, and so we don't need to do it, or we can do, we can do something to supplement what you're doing? What is the status of where you are on looking at energy efficiency in our state buildings?
Yes, thank you, Senator. The point of our testimony was to inform the committees that we are indeed doing that work. Much of this bill would be redundant in that manner. We think that we are covering an enormous amount of the building stock, but we're not covering 100% of it. So additional resources could be helpful to do that, but the way that we look at it, there are certain buildings that contribute much greater and are much more inefficient. And I think we're adequately covering that through the current benchmarking project.
So just to be sure that we're not duplicating, but we are getting a report, what is the status of what you're doing now? You say it's on contract, so what is the contract for the scope? And are you giving us a report of that?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Gail Sutuki-Jones to come up and provide the latest update to where we stand on that and the total amount of building stock, the number of buildings that are covered under that, Gail.
Hi there. So the benchmarking project that Mark was describing is a project that we've received federal funding for. And as you know, the federal funding has been put in kind of a limbo situation right now. So in the process of contracting with the contractor for this particular project to focus on 590 buildings that are over 10,000 square feet in the state of Huautia. And so basically, that's our focus. And we are currently, though, meeting with.
... utilizing the nearest exit or fire exit stair.
Sorry about that. Okay, okay, great. So we are also currently meeting with Huautia Energy and some of the state facilities. We have an Energy Efficiency for State Buildings cohort group that meets quarterly. And so basically, agencies such as UH, Department of Education, DAGS, public libraries, DoD, and others participate in these. And so we have found out recently that Department of Education has done an LED lighting retrofit that has covered almost all of their schools, and they did so actually starting in 2022. And so we're currently kind of coming up with a status for where these agencies are at. The project, the benchmarking project is, depending on when the contract actually gets executed, a two-year project, and so we should have results, you know, probably by 2027.
When you say when the project will be executed, are you in process or to be in process?
We are in process. We had some delays. We had some delays due to a number of different procurement reasons, but we have the contractors selected and we are currently drafting up the contract. And you have, you have funding for it. How much is your funding for that project? I think that one was 500,000.
Yeah.
500,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was about 500,000. And so you have, you're going to do the survey, the benchmarking survey. So this bill is also asking for technical assistance to state agencies. So when you do that survey, it also includes some kind of technical assistance to the departments if they are efficient or they need LED lighting. Yes, yeah. And we do that with Hawaii Energy because they're the ones who provide the rebates and incentives. We also have a Strategic Energy Facility Assessment Project. It's part of the same federal grant. That is another project that is currently under contract, well, no, sorry, in procurement. It's been awarded, but the contract has just been drafted. And so we anticipate that one will start sooner, actually sometime in March, if everything goes smoothly. And that one will focus on six facility types and six agencies coming up with assessments as well as strategies for financing retrofits, et cetera. So just for clarification, then, you are doing this already, but we don't have the assessment report. Correct. So if this bill were to be amended to say you are going to provide an assessment or at least status every year until you're done, and what you're doing with technical assistance, would that be focusing in on what at least we can get back from you, the status of state agencies? Yeah, that seems very reasonable. Yeah, doable. Thank you, Chair.
I have a very question. Both have questions.
Okay.
You first. Yeah, let's give you, sorry. So since you're here, what I heard was that this is, because there's no appropriation amount, okay? That this is federally funded, but the federal funds are now in limbo. If so, and we pass this bill, how much are we going to need to use? What kind of appropriation are you looking at to replace federal funds?
You know, thank you for the question. We are uncertain, really.
How much are you getting in federal funds now?
500,000 for this project.
For the benchmarking.
So at the very least, you're going to need 500,000.
I mean, conceivably, it could be blocked or impounded, but the funds have already been allocated and we were already awarded. So this is one of those, you know, out of the total $160 million that we've secured so far, we believe that most of that is already either in treasury or that, or we have access to it. And through legal channels, we could, we would certainly use every, everything at our disposal to ensure that those funds that we have already secured or have placed into contracts get spent.
Okay, so this bill refers to, well, when I read it, it was like all state--
All built, yes, right.
Which means like all of these fluorescents get changed, right?
Get changed.
How much is going to, how much is that going to cost us? And I see Keith Regan there. And it says as efficient, and it doesn't, there's no subset date here that says that upon, you know, upon federal funds being ended, that, that they, that, you know, we stop doing it. I mean, that's my concern. My concern is during these uncertain times, should we have a mandate to continue this when, how long is your federal grant for?
It's two, two years.
It's a two-year project.
Okay, but this, if we, it's, it's going to be beyond two years.
Yeah.
So have you asked, is it going to be your plan to ask for an appropriation in your budget every two years? And to me, 500,000 doesn't seem to be enough because, I mean, look, we still have fluorescents here.
Right, 500,000 isn't for the actual retrofits themselves, it's for the benchmarking of the buildings.
It's to identify which buildings haven't been retrofit and also what are the energy consumption, the specific current energy consumption needs that could be improved through energy efficiency.
Okay, so maybe I should ask that.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
Casey, I want DAGs.
I want DAGs, yeah.
So wait, one more question of, Mark, just in terms of, is your assessment, your study also going to say what the cost is? What is the deficiency and what would that estimated cost be so that when DAGs get it, they will know what are the next steps? For the strategy program, yes. For the benchmarking program, probably not. However, the work that we do with Hawaii Energy could definitely lead to something such as that, exactly what you're asking for. And so through our Energy Efficiency for State Buildings cohort, the partnership we have there could potentially produce what you're asking for. Okay, thanks.
Yes, Senator, yeah, just to clarify, Senator, it's really a two-step process. First is really understanding the building stock and what, what are the energy demands and needs? And, and the portfolio of equipment there, it could be improved. And then the second step is the, is to drill down and actually look at solutions, and that's when you can budget and see what the cost would be.
Thank you.
Senator, quick.
DAGs, please.
Yeah, but it's the first sentence of Section 2.
Hi, Keith. Glad you made it to the floor.
Must be present to win, huh?
Very present. So, you know, your division is responsible for the construction and maintenance of this building. Don't you guys already try to use energy efficiency lighting and--
We do. In fact, the last time I think we went through this process of upgrading and addressing energy efficiency was like 2010. And so there is, I think, some opportunity, you know, for us to explore another energy savings performance contract or contractor to help us look at what's out there and available now, right? Like was mentioned LED lighting, right? So move off of fluorescents and the possible opportunity to save on energy utilization in the building. So there's opportunity.
So would you rather get the technical assistance from the state energy office or would you rather see the complacency? And if that's the case, the price tag, I mean, what would it cost?
I don't know what it would cost because I'm actually not here to testify in this particular measure, so I don't have that details in front of me. But to answer your question, I'd rather get it done and start to realize the savings, right?
So do you, you're willing--
And that doesn't, and that doesn't say that I don't appreciate the work that they're doing, right?
So, so you get no problem if you guys were to work side by side with the energy office and if the federal funds, I mean, so saving like with federal funds, right, two years, you guys would be able to push the job at that level and do the change out or--
I don't know about every building.
But we can start with this one first, like the alarm first.
Yeah, the alarm.
Energy efficient alarm.
And the elevator.
Yeah.
Well, the elevator's having issues because of the alarm. It's malfunctioning right now.
You know, so, but you would be able to work side--
I have, yeah, in fact, we work closely with Hawaii State Energy Office on other, other matters. So, yeah, I mean, certainly we could.
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow on, so if in fact you are doing some of this change out on some of the buildings, wouldn't you work hand in glove with the energy office so that, you know, whatever they're finding, because they've already started some of the process, that you could actually build on their results and not go like in separate directions?
Yeah, I mean, I was speaking hypothetically.
Oh, okay.
So I wasn't saying we're doing it.
So you're not doing it now?
Right. Correct.
When you do it?
Yeah, we'll coordinate it.
Is anybody else? Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you.
All right, that was an awesome discussion. Okay, next up, from up country, kick, Senate Bill 700 relating to renewable energy, requires DAGs to assess potential, this has got several things going on. First, DAGs to assess potential feasibility of distributed energy resources, also requires agencies to look at setting the resilience hubs, and also assigning priority to require state facilities cost-effective energy efficiency measures to first responder facilities. So with all that going on in this bill, we first have Keith Ayashi, Department of Education, written with comments, DAGs.
Chair, Keith Regan, Comptroller for the state of Hawaii, Department of County and General Services, standup written testimony providing comments.
Thank you so much. We also have Laurel Brier of Hawaii Climate Action Coalition, written in support. Sherry Polak, 350 Hawaii, in support. Dave Molnix, Greenpeace Hawaii, is he on Zoom?
Not present on Zoom, Chair.
All right, moving on. We also have several individuals who submitted written testimony that is part of the record, all in support. We also have Lay from Susan Emery of the Green Party of Hawaii, written in support. And Lay from Diane Ware, individual expressing support. That's all we have on Senate Bill 700. Anybody else in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions on this bill? Yes, please, Senator.
DAGs, please.
Just trying to warm you up.
Because you're from Hawaii.
So Keith, on the, like Senate Bill 412, this bill calls for making assessments of the feasibility of installing distributed energy resource systems at state facilities. Is a bill like this necessary?
To, hmm, is a bill like this necessary? I think there's opportunity, right, to identify where and what facilities we might be able to deploy distributed energy resources, like, you know, either generation and storage or both. So I think the concept is good, and I think the state could benefit from something like this. And you'll see, and I think in our testimony, that it's asking that the Hawaii State Energy Office lead that effort, but--
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Alice, this is very similar to the bill we heard earlier.
Yes, it is, that's right.
Except for the resiliency hubs and the first responder parts, right?
Yep.
If the committee were to move this forward in the sake of clarity, should this be dumped the first part and just keep those two parts and use the other one as a vehicle for distributed energy?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Senate Bill 869, this is community outreach boards. Big Island wants neighborhood boards, who's to stop them? Defines community outreach board to mean a board established to serve in a community advisory capacity under a county commission or county department. Also includes community outreach boards in existing provisions of Sunshine, and then authorizes the boards to organize meetings and presentations to official board business statewide. And first up, we have on this one is Carletta Amorino, OIP.
You have to be in chair, vice chair, remember. Yeah. She's part of the state.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. And we have Charles Young, Kona CDP Action Committee, written in support. Nancy Pisaccio, Kona CDP Action Committee, also in support. Jason Masters, Kaua CDP Action Committee, written in support. Let's see, we also have Brad Kurukawa, Hamakua Community Development Plan Action Committee, in support. Ben Kreps, First Law Center, on Zoom? Nope. Okay, comments. And then finally, we have Mizu Liu and John Pelletier, both individuals, both in support. That's all we have on 869. Anybody in the audience wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions of OIP, since they're the only ones here? I have a quick question of OIP. We have a very similar bill that we're actually going to DM on later that also amends the same part of 92F for the outreach. You mentioned it when we had the hearing that this was a better bill to deal with this issue. I mean, but this has to do with community outreach boards and not necessarily neighborhood boards. Shouldn't we keep the changes for the presentations, 92F for neighborhood boards, in that bill while we try to stand up the CDP bill without addressing that?
I believe you're talking about Senate Bill 405, and I may have been confused when I testified the other day, but I do believe that was the bill that addressed Senator Morawaki's concerns about government officials being able to--
Yeah.
--present at neighborhood board meetings.
But this also addresses that too as well, that part of it. So do you think we should just separate that out and keep the neighborhood board changes for the presentations in that bill and then just simply stand up the community outreach boards without addressing that in this bill?
I'm, I would leave that up to you. Our position was we weren't exactly sure what or who these community outreach boards were, if they were already in existence or if these were meant to be new boards.
Big Island.
Big Island.
The Big Island.
There's some Big Island.
I don't see Kalunga here.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, I think this is a Big Island thing they've prepared version of it. That's all I have. Anybody else? No? No? Okay. I believe that takes us to the end of the agenda, doesn't it? All right, we'll recess for the sitting.
Thank you for your patience. We're reconvening the Committee on Energy and Intergovernmental Affairs and our good friends from the Committee on Government Operations. We're going to make some votes cast for our three o'clock agenda here in Room 225. The first measure is SB 133 relating to energy. This is the bill that kind of pushes the PUC to get us some clear guidance on wheeling. And I know the PUC has opened a docket to look at intrastate, you know, building or government property to government building, and we appreciate the PUC doing that, but want to make sure that we keep the pressure on. This date on the bill right now has the deliverables of next 26, for the deliverable in 26, and we're going to start at 20, the 26th legislative session, which I think is a little bit too ambitious. So if you're indulgent, members, if you could move that date back to start of the 2027 legislative session and keep the pressure on the PUC to like make sure that we, if we can, go down the route of wheeling, that we do it in a proper manner, but that we make progress on this issue. So that is the recommendation. Members of EIG, any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
So for Senate Bill 133, the chair's recommendation is to pass--
With amendments.
With amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair votes aye. Senator Decoit?
Aye.
Senator Richards? Excuse. Senator Favella? It's excused. Recommendation is adopted.
Okay, GVO, same recommendation, SD 1, Vice Chair.
On SB 133, to pass with amendments, Chair McCulley.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Morawaki.
Aye.
Senator Sandra Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Favella? Excused, measure passes.
Thank you. The next measure is Senate Bill SB 161 relating to county permitting and inspection. I think we all would like to try to reduce the hurdles of government permitting, and this bill does that, but does so, I think, a little bit too quickly. So as we heard from HCD, there are things that the counties really should be in charge of and substate agencies, particularly theirs, don't have the capacity to do certain things that are necessary for safe construction of our buildings. So, members, if you could give me till Tuesday, I'm going to work with HCD to do some carve outs, so the statutes of wholesale blanket sidestep of county permitting. So if you don't mind, for EIG, we're going to take a vote on this measure on Tuesday, February 4th at 3:00.
We will do the same, but I am going to note for the record, there are a lot of concerns about this measure that have been communicated to my office right now. So just want to put that out there, but we're going to do the same as EIG Tuesday, 3:00 PM, February 4th, 2025, Conference Room 225.
Okay, we're going to make this thing sparkle for you.
Thank you.
Okay, next bill is Senate Bill 232 regarding renewable energy. The two chairs have conferred and I've talked to--
An emergency has been reported in this building. Please cease opera.
I talked to the author of this bill and he's actually okay with us going with the bill that we have later in the agenda since they both kind of touch on the same permitting issues. So, members, we're going to defer action on 323. The next measure is Senate Bill 412 relating to renewable energy. This is where we are going to have a good look at all of our state buildings and how best we can put PV onto buildings that are appropriately set up to accept that. But right now, there is no entity other than each individual agency that does that assessment, and most agencies don't have somebody with that expertise. So, thank you, Mark Lick. So thank you, Mark Glick, in the Hawaii State Energy Office, for winning the jump in poll contest and saying that you would be willing to take on this responsibility. So we're going to make that amendment, is having HSEO in charge of gathering all the data and delivering us some timeline as to where we can get more PV on our state buildings. So with SD 1, members, any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
Okay, recommendation for SB 412 is to pass with amendments within the absences of Senator Richards and Favella. Are there any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. GBO, same recommendation, Senate draft 1, I vote yes.
Chair votes yes, vice chair votes yes, Senator Maruaki?
Yes.
Senator Sam Bonaventura?
Yes.
Senator Favella, excused. Measure's adopted.
Thank you. Sorry, members, especially for members of EIG, I mentioned that we're going to vote on Senate Bill 161, the permitting bill, but I failed to mention that we're not going to be in this room. We're going to be in room 016 when we take that vote next week, Tuesday. So, back on track, we are on Senate Bill 588 relating to renewable energy. This is helping to expedite the permitting process for, go down the road of self-certification for solar projects. We do think that it would be prudent for us to put in the language suggested by DLNR to make sure that we are not jeopardizing any federal funding, because we don't want that to be collateral damage in this measure. So we are going to add all of DLNR's suggested amendments and also have technical non-substantive amendments for this measure. Any discussion? If not, Senator Chang, I vote yes.
Okay, so for SB 588, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. If members present, do we have any objections or reservations? Seeing none, the recommendation is adopted.
Okay, GBO, same recommendation, Senate draft 1, I vote yes.
Any members present, are there any reservations you're knowns? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, for Senate Bill 92, Senate Bill 635, Senate Bill 700, and Senate Bill 869, after conferring with my co-chair, there's some issues we need to work on, so we're going to defer these, all of these, time certain for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, 3:00 p.m., and for GBO only in conference room 225.
For EIG, we'll revisit all of these issues and see the wonderful work required colleague from the committee, Chair of the Committee of Government Operations, and then look at his gleaming, glittering new bills. And we are going to be taking a vote on February, Tuesday, February 4th, 3 o'clock, in room 016.
Okay, this concludes the joint hearing between the amazing Committee on Energy.
Amazing.
All right, everybody, welcome back for the decision-making agenda on the items that were heard last Tuesday, I believe it was January 28th. In this room, conference room, we'll just get right into it right now. Senate Bill 254 relating to procurement, recommendation is on page 2 to remove lines 6 through 10 as it will be addressed in SB 383, defective date of January 1st, 2525. And also, we want to note in the committee report, in contrast to other measures, potentially before this committee, this seeks a nuanced path to provide needed real-time exemptions to the reporting requirements, which is better simply than suspending or exempting the code in its entirety. There also may be an unintended consequence in raising the thresholds of forcing manual processes over e-procurement, and given that, working with SBO and our good counterpart from Ways and Means, we're requesting that Ways and Means add language from SBO when the bill is heard to clarify this issue. Members, questions? Comments? If not, vice chair, 254, SD 1.
Chair McKelvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Maruaki?
Aye.
Senator Sam Bonaventura?
Aye.
Senator Favella, excused. The measure's adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 383, we're just going to move this with a defective date of January 1st, 2025, because we also need to address the same issues that were raised in the previous bill. So we're going to go ahead and note that in the committee report and ask Ways and Means to help us get that clarified, so we don't inadvertently put people through manual procurement. Members, questions?
Just a clarification, just in what's going into the committee report in terms of the e-procurement, it's also a this bill, so are you going to put the same language...
That's why we're repeating it twice. So thank you for that clarification. Okay, with that, 383, SD 1.
Okay, are the members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure's adopted.
Okay, next up, 382, there was all testimony in support, and so with that and no recommended amendments, we're going to go as is. Members, questions? Comments? If not, vice chair, 3D 2, as is.
Members, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure's adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill 462, talk to the author, given the testimony, it appears that the aim of this measure was to indeed encapsulate the DAGs administrative rule 3-122-139 into the HRS. So we're going to redo the bill to do that and add a defective date of 2525 in order to ensure that it comports with everything. Members, questions? Comments? If not, 462, SD 1.
Recommendation is to pass 462 with amendments. Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, thank you. This one here, next one, Senate Bill 131 relating to procurement. In discussions with the author, we think this issue is being addressed in other bills, so with that, we're going to defer this one indefinitely. Next up, Senate Bill 615. We're also going to defer this time certain, this one, we're going to defer time certain, my apologies, to February 4th, 3:00 p.m. as well. Okay? Next up, Senate Bill 5. This bill here, recommendation is a Senate draft 1 to amend the bill to clarify that all the procedural requirements that the gov must follow to make appointments to fill legislative vacancies, including deadlines and residency requirements, also applies to vacancies created by the death or permanent incapacitation of the prior incumbent before primary election whose name is the only one on the ballot. And given the changes, we'd like to put a defective date of 25 in the measure for further discussion. Members, questions? Comments? If not, vice chair, SB 5, SD 1.
Are the members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill 300, given the testimony and other things, we're going to defer indefinitely. Next up, Senate Bill 1081, this is for the Legislative Budget Office. What we're going to do on this bill here is we're going to go ahead and defer time certain for February 4th, 2025, in this room, because we need to look at possibly doing a feasibility study in this measure, given the wide, wide costing of establishing this that we've seen from other jurisdictions.
Senator, 3:00 p.m.?
Oh, sorry, 3:00 p.m., my apologies. Thank you for that. So 3:00 p.m., February 4th, 2025, conference room 225. Next up, Senate Bill 711, gubernatorial appointments. Recommendation here is that we're going to go ahead, we're going to defer this time certain as well to February 4th, 2025, 3:00 p.m. in conference room 225. Next up, Senate Bill 375. We are, this is to the government, the Restructuring Commission bill, we'd like to keep this going because this could address some very fundamental issues. We're going to put in the committee report to ask the Committee on Ways and Means to consider the funding of $50,000 and a defective date of 2525. Members, questions? Comments? If not, vice chair, 375, SD 1.
Members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure's adopted.
Okay, thank you. 418, quite a vibrant discussion with the Attorney General's office. While we appreciate the positive response of the AG, we recognize there are some structural issues that need to be addressed. So as such, we're going to amend the measure by doing the following. Page 3, line 14, we're going to change state agencies to Attorney General. Page 3, we're going to remove lines 17, 18, and line 20. Page 4, we're going to remove lines 1 through 3. We're going to remove the repeal requirement, and we're also going to add a defective date of 2525 to encourage further discussion. But we believe this will address the issues that were raised by the departments and the AGs about the bill. Members, questions? Comments? If not, 418, SD 1.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure is adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 55, admin rules. What we're going to do is take the testimony that Mr. Fritz gave us, and so far as complying with Title II of the ADA. On page 1, lines 8 and 9, to read, "The full text of the agency's proposed rules shall be in a digitally accessible and searchable format that meets or exceeds the most current ratified standards under Section 508 of the Federal Rehabilitation Act of 1973." And that's 29 U.S.C., Section 794D. And on page 2, lines 7 to 11, to read, "All state agencies through the Office of the Lieutenant Governor shall make available on the website of the Office of the Lieutenant Governor the full text of the rules of the agency in a digitally accessible and searchable format that meets or exceeds the most current ratified standards under Section 508 of the Rehabilitation Act." We're going to delay the implementation to January 1st, 2027, at the request of the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and add a defective date of 2525 for further discussions. Members, questions? Comments? If not, SB 55, SD 1.
Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, Senate Bill 870, telecommunications. Given the testimony, we're going to have the comptroller or their designee work with the state library and/or their designee to identify locations and costs associated with increasing public access, including looking at additional resources such as staffing. We're also going to include UH as a potential partner in this endeavor, and I've notified the higher ed chair of this, and defective date of 2525. Members, questions? Yes?
In the last...
870, sorry.
I'm sorry, I know we already voted, but I'm going to suggest an amendment on SB 270 because you said a defective date of 2525.
Yes, it is 2525.
So it's supposed, so I think you need to put that on the record, that the defective date...
The defective date is...
SB 270 is 2525.
Which means I should pick a better defective date. The defective date for the measure in question is 2525, and for the record, all defective dates will be 2525.
Thank you.
Should pick a better date instead of 2525.
We were discussing whether or not that was the last one.
Yeah, very much, I appreciate that. Okay, on this one here, are we good with 870?
Yes.
An emergency has been reported in this building. Please cease operations and move.
All right, with that, 870, Senate draft 1, I vote yes.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, Senate Bill 270, we appreciate the county councils on this, but noting the overwhelming opposition, we will defer indefinitely. Next up, Senate Bill 405, Neighborhood Board Meetings Agenda Third-Party Reports. As we discussed in the joint hearing, we're going to defer time certain to Tuesday, February 4th, at 3:00 p.m. in order to rectify the issues that were brought up in that bill, in this bill as well as the other one. Senate Bill 406 relating to copying fees. We realize the challenges, but also we believe that there is a way to do this. So given the testimony, we're going to recommend an SD 1 to allow the cap of 5 cents to be only for digital copies of records that have already been digitized, and we're going to add a defective date of 2525 to encourage further conversations. Members, questions? Comments? If not, 406, SD 1.
Any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
380 relating to non-general funds. In a discussion with the auditor, it appears they can do this already, so with everybody's indulgence, I am going to defer this measure. Everybody good? All right. Next up, Senate Bill 372 relating to the State Naming Commission. Likewise, this bill, we're going to defer indefinitely, as there are concerns about the impact to not only UH, but also regarding expansive commercial naming, which is brought up by the outdoor circle. So everybody good with the deferral?
Yep.
Okay, next up, we have Senate Bill 1132. Recommendation is we defer time certain Tuesday, February 4th, at 3:00 p.m. to work on this measure with stakeholders. And there's another bill similar to this as well. Senate Bill 78 relating to voter registration. While we like the idea, given the chaos with the feds, the vacancies, and the practical hurdles, we will defer this bill indefinitely. Okay? Senate Bill 381 relating to public agency meetings, defer time certain, February 4th, at 3:00 p.m. in room 225. Okay, SB 2 relating to trees, we're going to work on this a little bit more. So with that, we're going to defer time certain Tuesday, February 4th, at 3:00 p.m., conference room 225. And finally, relating to arborists, recommendation is that we go as is. However, in the committee report, we're going to note that this brought up in the testimony, this is not only good for the whole state, but also critical to Lahaina and the massive need for re-vegetation. Members, questions? Comments? If not, vice chair, 546, as is.
Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Okay, I believe that takes us to the end of the DM. Thank you, guys, all your help on this, and we will see you next week.